The network is going to be improved at least five times. The battery life is going to be improved by at least 10 times.
So the fifth generation is not just iterative, it's transformative. So the way that we think about old school dial-up and today is the way we're going to think about today and tomorrow with fifth generation.
The first area is called enhanced mobile broadband. The second area is going to be machine-to-machine type communications. And then the third type of application is called ultra-reliable, low-latency applications.
The other thing is a lot of people realize that a big aspect of 5G is going to be around entertainment. Streaming video, gaming, all kinds of great new fun things to do online, virtual reality. And as part of that, here with Hollywood at the center, we know that we'll be building up our entertainment industry as well.
While we're doing that here, we're installing small cells. We call them small cells. Basically, we're going to install these small cells on poles.
But to get to the street light, we're pulling electricity from the Department of Water and Power. We're pulling cable through the Department of Street Services. It connects into transportation, so LA Department of Transportation is part of it. The Bureau of Engineering, Wreckin' Parks. Almost every city department touches in some way some aspect of this, whether they're going to be part of building it, part of operating it, or part of consuming the 5G. And so, all of this has made a really interesting connectivity and digital inclusion working group where about 14 different city departments and elected officials participate.
In the future, there's going to be thousands of these units all over the city.
So we're going to be one of the first cities that is going to be 5G. And it's important for two reasons. One is right now, the way that people can access the internet at home isn't equitable. It's been built based on what companies wanted to do. Now with fifth generation, the city is working with companies to make sure that that next generation of internet is equitable across the city. So it'll be just as easy to get online, just as reliable wherever you are in the city, no matter whether you're in a high-income area or a low-income area. And the next thing that's really interesting about having LA as an early city is that the kinds of businesses that are going to create completely new kinds of experiences online will be building in 5G. And if we don't have 5G in LA, they won't be building it here. We want those new businesses to be part of our tech sector and part of our global connection to the world. So we want the 5G companies to incubate and start here in Los Angeles. For LA, 5G means equity, economic growth, education, and entertainment.
LA is one of a handful of cities to roll out the technology starting as early as this year. La Plaza de Cultura y Artes is known as a historical monument in LA. It's also about to become the center of a multicultural community as the new La Plaza Village goes up. Anna Marcos introduces us to some of the muralists who will make the project truly unique.
This new development going up near Olvera Street will boost housing and economic development in downtown LA. La Plaza Village will put hundreds of units on the market, many at affordable rates, and provide thousands of square feet of retail space, all with a Latino twist.
Because we look at this as the Latino center of Los Angeles, this is where the city was first created. So the project has been designed in a Mexican motif, if you will, with very bright, vivid colors.
But La Plaza Village is also about art, culture, and the people. Local leaders announced the four Latino muralists who will paint the art on its walls. Themes will focus on immigrants, family, and Latino contributions to LA. Or how about "La Reina de los Angeles," Our Lady, the Queen of Angels, which was LA's founding name?
I chose to make a more modern, secular version of that because after all, this is the city of the Our Lady, Queen of Angels. So she seemed appropriate, she seemed aspirational, she's young, she's strong.
This artist immigrant father once collected cardboard for a living. His mother was a farm worker. A generation later, he has become an artist and college professor, so he's celebrating immigrants and family.
And that's what I wanted to represent, people who want to get ahead in this country. My parents were immigrants, you know, they made a big sacrifice.
The four murals will be spaced along the outside walls of the complex so they are visible, and everyone, residents, pedestrians, and motorists alike, can see them.
My father was best known as a labor leader, but his vision was much larger. He understood that after long, hard day's work, people come home to a whole different set of problems. The lack of access to affordable housing, educational opportunities, access to the political and civic affairs of their communities.
And it appears future residents of La Plaza Village will get all of the above. The project is set to open in early 2019.
20% of the 355 apartments going up will be affordable units. Well, when you think of adopting a pet, a dog or cat probably comes to mind, but have you ever thought of adopting a chicken? Well, many folks have, and they came out to a workshop recently, put on by the city, to learn how they can adopt and raise one.
Oh, yeah. That one has a lot of pets.
Yep, this is really happening. People from all over LA are adopting chickens as pets.
And I think they're just wonderful little creatures and a lot of fun.
The Department of Animal Services hosted a seminar about chicken adoption and care. The seminar took place at the East Valley Shelter in Van Nuys and was attended by over 200 people.
A lot of people don't know that you can keep these kind of pets as indoor pets. They don't make that much of a mess. And even a rooster that's kept indoors probably makes less noise than a parrot would, I would imagine.
A couple of years ago, I met a rooster named Checkers, who was incredibly friendly. And since then, I've started handling every chicken that comes in here. Very few of the staff and volunteers prioritizes chickens. So I've kind of made it my little niche here at East Valley.
Do we have some crow?
While the average cost of owning a dog or a cat can run in excess of $1,200 a year, owning a chicken as a pet can be half the cost and can provide the owners with a nice little bonus: the ability to know exactly where their eggs are coming from.
There's a general effort to get us closer back to nature and to being self-sufficient and eating locally. And, you know, this is part of that effort for my wife and I, is to be more self-sufficient for basic necessities.
Since chickens lay the majority of their eggs during the first two years, it doesn't mean their lives are less meaningful to these attendees.
You know, you keep taking care of it. Hey, you know, it's like any other animal. I mean, a cat doesn't give you food, a dog doesn't give you food unless you're in other countries, but, I mean, no, they're companions. And so, you just love and take care of them.
So perhaps it's time to think about the chicken as not just a super tasty meal, because we all know they are, but it's time to think of them as a great addition to the family.
LA City Animal Shelters also have rabbits, reptiles, and rodents in need of homes. For more, visit laanimalservices.com. Proposition 10 gets support from local leaders. Downtown's Food Truck Tuesdays are becoming a big hit, and you'll soon be able to tour the Hollyhock House without ever leaving your home. All these stories in City Beat. LA City Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson, advocacy groups, and other state and city officials gathered at Lamarck Park Village to announce their support for Proposition 10, the Affordable Housing Act, which would expand local jurisdiction's ability to enact rent control ordinances statewide. Opponents say Prop 10 would make the housing shortage even worse by discouraging new construction, but Harris-Dawson says Prop 10 will go a long way to help the city's housing crisis.
This proposition is very, very important because it repeals a law that stops cities and communities all over the state from doing what they need to do to care for and to manage the housing situation in their town.
Food truck mania is alive and well in the City of Angels. The trend of buying your hot food at the curb keeps growing. In one part of downtown LA, Food Truck Tuesdays have become a regular part of the work week. Food Truck Tuesdays in downtown LA provide a great midweek treat for office workers, tourists, and others in this part of downtown LA as food trucks converge on Grand Park.
I mean, you get three or four trucks, three or four days that we're here. I can't think of anything better, can you?
The Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs announced that an online virtual reality tour of the Hollyhock House at Barnesdale Art Park is set to debut this fall. The city council approved $133,000 in funding last year to produce the online virtual reality tour of the Frank Lloyd Wright-designed home in East Hollywood, which was built before the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. Because it is a national historic landmark, it cannot be altered to increase accessibility. Mayor Eric Garcetti said everyone should be able to experience LA's cultural landmarks, adding that Hollyhock House is a remarkable piece of architecture, and a virtual reality will allow people with disabilities and the elderly to explore a location with deep history in our city. Dodgers slugger Yasiel Puig looks forward to LA's newest ballpark for underserved kids. Gil Reyes has more on the team effort from South LA.
Fun-loving Dodgers outfielder Yasiel Puig helps break ground on the latest Dodgers' Dream Field. These are youth ballparks built or refurbished in underserved neighborhoods. Puig says he wished he had one while growing up poor in Cuba.
You know, I come here to the United States to play baseball and be here in Los Angeles and see every day the community and the fans go every night to the stadium and foot the stadium and show my name and help my team to win. And that's the reason I opened my charity foundation to help kids.
Puig's Youth Sports Foundation, as well as the LA Dodgers Foundation, are pitching in to make this happen. The field is being built at Algin Sutton Rec Center in South Los Angeles, an alternative to gang life, says Mom Karina Lundes.
Especially in the neighborhood where we live, we need that. You know, there's a lot of other things going on, so this kind of focuses them in the actual community playing, and so I'm just very happy for it.
This will be the 50th Dodgers' Dream Field, the second one at the Rec Center. It's set to open in September.
The Dodgers have just been such a wonderful partner to us, and it's just, we're so grateful to everything that your organization has done.
And all the time you need something for me, I go and be here too. Hey, kids, let's go play baseball.
In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Sutton Rec Center will now have two Dodger Dream Fields. The first was established at Rec Center back in 2003. LA Fleet Week rolls into town, and so does the Navy Film Festival. Celebrate a Made in LA Arts and Music Festival. And if you're a vegan, you won't want to miss this street fair. All this and this week's things to do. Vegan Street Fair returns to Los Angeles for 2018 with a plethora of vegan-friendly eats and vendors, including Evolution Burger, Charlie's Brownies, and much more. The fair will include games, live entertainment, karaoke, and more vegan fun than you'll know what to do with. The fair takes place at the Federal Bar in North Hollywood on September 1st through the 2nd. On Saturday, the 1st, you must be 21 or over to enter, while the fair will be open to all ages on Sunday. The fair runs from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM both days. The Federal Bar is located at 5303 Lancashire Boulevard in North Hollywood. Featuring black and white to modern era films, LA Fleet Week 2018, presented by Tom Clancy's Jack Ryan on Amazon Prime Video, will include a Labor Day Weekend Navy Film Festival at the iconic Warner Grand Theater in downtown San Pedro. The festival will celebrate the century-long relationship between the U.S. Navy and the world-renowned film industry that has brought military life, storylines, and battle realities to the big screen since 1918. The film fest begins September 1st at 4:00 PM at Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro. Golden Road Brewing presents Made in LA, a two-day music and arts festival celebrating Los Angeles' art and culture. Join Golden Road for great performances, rows of food trucks, art installations, and vendors. Festival runs September 1st through the 3rd from 5:00 PM to 1:30 AM at Golden Road Brewing in Silverlake. And that's a look at some things to do. The city of LA is gearing up for Independence Day, Mexican Independence Day, that is. Anna Marcos has more on what's in store for this year.
As far as holidays go, El Grito is a big one for LA's Mexican-American community, and this year it promises to grow bigger than ever. El Grito celebrates Mexico's independence in 1810.
Historically, El Grito was this cry for independence amongst ordinary people who did the extraordinary in fighting and achieving their independence.
And in that spirit of independence, who says the Mona Lisa can't wear a sombrero? Councilmember Monica Rodriguez walks by her favorite Pacoima mural, painted by an artist whose work will appear at this year's El Grito. Rodriguez will host this year's Big Bash, and she promises some new experiences at the party.
This year is unique because we've actually extended the celebration into Grand Park as well. We are going to have food trucks, we have Molcajete Domingueiro, which is a marketplace of local artisans.
And there's more. The councilwoman also promises someone special will be taking the stage.
We want to encourage everyone to come out early to get a good spot for the performances because I'm not prepared to actually share at this moment in time who we've secured, but it's going to be big.
The festival is on track to be as colorful as ever and more, and it's free.
For more information, visit elgritoala2018 eventbrite.com. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Mike from Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. Mr. Herman, sit down. Today is Tuesday, August 28th. Want to welcome you to City Hall, welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, we do have quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Plumen Philbonne, Busceno, Sadio Anglender, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Oferil Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Eleven members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rodriguez moves, Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonne moves, Corretts, seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we rise? We'll be led today in our flag salute by Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's go through the, again, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 44 for three weeks to September 18th.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 11 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Continue.
Items 12 through 37 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's, Ms. Martinez?
You're not there yet.
Where, 12 through 37?
I want to call Items 37 special.
Let's hold 37. Now we're voting on Items 12 through 36. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 aces.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 15 forthwith.
So ordered. Continue.
Items 38 through 47 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Anglender.
47 special.
Let's hold Item 47. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Let's continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, we'll start with the multiple comment part of today's agenda. Mr. Herman, Items 1 through 11 and 38 through 47.
So we all know who Bonne is. Relative funding to neighborhood traffic safety. Well, isn't he the one that created the troubles in Santa Monica and Venice Beach with traffic control? Wasn't we, the public, dissatisfied with his decision to make buffer zones? Weren't we the ones? So we're in opposition to Item 46. Fuck Bonne. Then on Item 45, mommy Martinez for a better community for a period only in September. Well, that's only one month. How do we remedy the problems with homelessness for one fucking month, people? But yet, two mommies are there chit-chatting and not listening to Item 45, which is important because white nigger politicians fail to build better communities. Right, Monica, you fat bitch? Listen!
Mr. Herman, please stay on topic.
I am. And then on Item 42 in CD 11, a councilman who doesn't wear a tie for the Bureau of Street Lighting. Maybe if you put the fucking lights on, you could see that you're not wearing a fucking tie, asshole. 43.
Stay on the comment, I mean, on the subject.
CD 8, CD 10, fucking terrorist changing the name of a public street. Changing the name of a public street to what? Gramacy? Germacy? Germitskany? What the fuck does it say here? Granacy, fucking place, to approximately Wesley, like Wesley Snipes. Poo! But off of Jefferson, where the KK nigger Boulevard to be established at the fucking Obama Boulevard. Fuck Obama and fuck your Boulevard. Can't stand Obama.
Okay, you sit down to...
The name changed and it's...
It's okay, it's okay. Mr. Herman, you want to speak or not? Just stay on topic.
I just, I...
No, come on.
Would someone please ask the drunk to shut up? But off of Jefferson, where the KKK nigger Boulevard to be established at the fucking Obama Boulevard. Fuck Obama and fuck your Boulevard. Can't stand Obama.
Okay, you sit down to...
Find that the name changed and it's...
It's okay. It's okay. Mr. Herman, you want to speak or not? Just stay on topic.
I just, I...
No, come on.
Would someone please ask the drunk to shut up?
No, you just go on and stay on topic.
So in CD 8 and CD 10, fuck the drunks who find that the name that I decide, KKK, is a better name for Obama, who put Obamacare on the record, as Trump put it, fuck you.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you're one minute.
So we continue to have threats, harassment, and retaliation by white-faced people here. Who are these white-faced people? I'll tell you who they are. Nury Martinez and old bitch Monica. That's who they are. Because Bonin is pushing the white niggers back to Skid Row because he wants to gentrify the fucking community. Who said Bonin is our chancellor? Bonin is a fucking punk with a little chongo at his side. He shouldn't bring his chongo to work...
Now you got to talk about things we have some control over. We have some... You know what, Mr. Herman? Your time's expired. Sergeants, let's take him, let's take him out of here. Let's take him out of here. No, take him out of here. No, no, take him out of here. You are removed, Mr. Herman. You are removed, Mr. Herman. And let me say, if you want some help, mental health, we can bring in people to help you. You, you, you continue to disrupt. You get too irate, we're going to have to remove you. We're going to have to remove you. Just leave, Mr. Herman. Mr. City Attorney, he is still disrupting. But remember, if you need help, we will offer to put together a team of people that can help you deal with your mental illness. Let's just get, Mr. Herman, you are removed. You're a Herman. Mr. Herman is, Mr. Herman is still disrupting. He is still disrupting, to the point, Mr. City Attorney, where he's a little scary and belligerent. So I just want to go on the record. It would appear that he is not getting any better, that he is getting worse. Ms. McAllister, guess what? I do not have, I'm going to have to trust you to speak on the items that you signed up for, and I know I can do that. So go ahead.
Yes, I have two, 40 and 40, and a public comment.
Okay, go on.
Number 40 is about naming that street after Obama. I think, I know where that street is. I used to teach in that area. That's like the hood. I think we should, he never went to the hood. He spent most of his time in Hollywood when he would come here. And the media said he came to California about 40 times in his eight years. So I think they should name a street in Hollywood after him, not, not in the hood. He didn't do anything for black people. Okay, now, my public comment.
You will go straight to that. In fact, as we're giving her a public comment, just so that you know, Ms. McAllister, when he announced that he was a candidate for president, he did it on that street with me at Rancho Cenica Park. That's where he made his official California announcement, just so you know. Now the one minute is yours.
Okay, thank you. Last week, I handed the council two handouts. Now, we have attorneys. I asked for the list of the 500 or more attorneys that the city, that the city attorney says they have. They gave me the list. I went to the bar association, and you have people who are so-called attorneys, they're not certified with the bar association, like Anita Avakin. We got one guy, been there 13 years without a license, one 17 years, one 22 years. Now I got the other list that's updated, and you have people currently working here as lawyers that are not on the bar. I have the list here. Now, this is a federal offense, because this bar association requirement is throughout the United States. What is happening to that money? Now, if you, now, these are people making 266 figures. If you hired me and gave me $200,000, and I'm not a lawyer, what am I going to do with it? I'm going to kick some of it back. You're not giving it to me just to be given it to me. We need a federal investigation. They're stealing like you wouldn't believe, and we want these people out of the attorney, city attorney's office.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Okay, Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, that concludes our multiple comment section. Let's vote on a few items right now. So, Mr. Clerk, I'd like to vote on items 1 through 9 and item 11. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Thank you. Let's now vote on items 38 through 42. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to items 44 through 47. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate. Okay, let's reconsider item 47. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, let's hold that item. Okay, I want to get Mr. Watkins. Come on. I saw him in the back. Bill? And Ms. Linda? Mr. Watkins, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Nice to see everyone. I haven't been here since April. I marched with the King family in Atlanta, a neat event, March for Humanity, and I'm back after a long walk. Nice to see everyone. Mr. Wesson and to everybody, I think we can hold the decorum a little, little tighter. F-words do go against decorum rules. I think the rules of public speaking, when we get into breaking the order of things, abusing council members, you know what? If no one's even going to listen, why do we, why do we have public comment?
I'm listening to you, Mr. Watkins. Go ready. I mean, Mr. Hawkins, go ahead.
And I'll add, Mr. Blumenthal, thanks. I'll add, Mr. Sadio, thank you. The city is dirty. There's a lot of crime out there. Your suits aren't looking good to me. Your suits and your ties don't look good to me. I need your help out there. We have trash in the gutter, trash in the drains, trash all over the sidewalks. I love you guys, but take off your suits and come help, please.
Thank you. Okay, do we have Ms. Hodge-Linda, or Linda Hodge? Linda? There's no Linda going once, twice, thrice, no Linda. So that concludes our general public comment. Let's pull up item 10. Mr. Clerk, let's vote on item 10. On item 10, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, I'd like to ask Carl to come forward. In fact, let me be official, Mr. Morgan, Carl Morgan. Terrence, Michelle, we're going to do item 43. Good to see you.
Good morning, Council President. On July 7th, 2018, this past summer, the Empowerment Congress West Area Neighborhood Development Council voted to support the renaming of Rodeo Road to Barack, President Barack Obama Boulevard. We were in full support of this historical figure, and we realized that there was more than a few folks in our neighborhood council that were in opposition of the renaming of the Boulevard. But we came to a consensus within our neighborhood that this would be inspirational to all young people who grew up in the area to aspire to higher limits because of this historical and aspirational and great figure in Mr. President Barack Obama.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming down. So do we have Terrence? Please come forward.
All right, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to speak in favor also of the renaming of Rodeo Road to Obama Boulevard. I'm actual resident and homeowner on Rodeo Road itself, so my address will actually be changing. I'm kind of excited about that. As well as it being for the community, I also think, since we have the Expo line and now the new Crenshaw line coming in right by my corner and right by where Obama Boulevard will be, I think it's great for tourists and for people to come into the community that's not really well-touristed at the moment. And I think it's a great thing for the city, and I'm all in favor, and I believe my neighbors are as well. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay, members, now let us prepare to vote on this historic measure. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Ms. Martinez, item 37.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, before us is a very important matter. Our police department works with our Sexual Assault Response Team Centers, also known as SART Centers, to collect forensic evidence in sexual assault investigations. These centers, which were, are all certified by the county, are staffed by dedicated nurses and physicians who are especially trained in the areas of forensics. They provide high-level service and professionalism to victims who come emotionally and physically wounded. Their multidisciplinary response to victims of assault or victims of human trafficking supports efforts to restore a well-being, a person who has been a victim of any of these crimes. Not to mention, the evidence that is gathered is oftentimes incredibly important during a sexual assault investigation. The city, through its personnel department, is responsible for reimbursing the centers for its exams. However, reimbursement rates exams have not been adjusted since 2002. This means that we have not had an increase in fees for these critical services in 16 years. This leaves the centers to have to deal with some of the additional costs for providing these services. The healthcare providers conducting these examinations are mandated to meet state and national standards, and their examiners and supervisors receive specialized training. Los Angeles has the best SART centers in the nation, and they deserve to be reimbursed with the appropriate amount for this very important service. This is why I introduced this motion. I'd like to thank Mr. Krikorian for being my second on this motion. Today, I'm asking that the city look into adjusting the reimbursement rate for this forensic eventuary examinations conducted by the SART centers. The county of the Board of Supervisors is also already moving in the same direction. We cannot be behind this issue. We need to stay in front of it and make sure that we are reimbursing our centers at the same rate. Colleagues, I ask for your support to, on this matter, to make sure that these centers are able to continue providing the level of service and care for the victims of assault. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ms. Martinez?
No, I stick your point.
I know. You did. That's, that's how it came out.
Oh. Mr. Wesson, you have a very special guest this morning?
Yes, we do. In fact, we have an individual that's with us today that is no stranger at all to this facility, and you might be asking yourself, why the heck is he even here? Well, to my dear colleagues and ladies and gentlemen and boys and girls, it's that time again. It's the time for our big L.A. County Fair, and we have with us today our former CAO, current friend, my constituent, Miguel Santiago, who, who, Miguel, I called him Miguel Contreras, Miguel...
Oh, boy.
So we have Miguel Santana, our good friend, who used to be our CAO, who's now a constituent in my district. Let's give Miguel a round of applause. Well, Santiago is a little younger, so, you know...
A little thinner, too.
A little thinner, Miguel said. You know, this is a very exciting time. Last year, the theme of the fair centered around the Olympics. And Mayor Garcetti and I visited the, the fair. Miguel and his staff took great care of us. It is one of the most phenomenal adventures to be had in this part of, of the, this region of the, the city, the county. We rode in a parade, members, that was very similar to being in New Orleans, where we were allowed to throw beads at the thousands of people. It was just so much fun. And ate a lot of things that were very tasty, none of which was healthy. The only thing I did not eat was the chocolate-covered grasshopper. This year, however, starting this Friday, on the 31st, we will begin the fair again. And this year proves to even be more exciting. The theme, Mr. Corretts, is get your kicks. Get your kicks on Route 66. So the fair will be highlighting Route 66, and it's going to have an exhibit that deals with various stops along the eight states incorporated. In fact, Mr. Corretts, can you name the eight states?
I don't think I can call Tom LeBonde.
So that's, where's LeBonde's when, when, where's LeBonde? Oh, and there's...
California and Ohio.
Well, I was close.
I got seven of them.
You got seven of them. But anyway, so that, that's going to be a very exciting, exciting exhibit. Another thing that I want to highlight, and now that Mr. O'Farrell did, you know, mentioned seven out of the eight, there's a young lady in the district where I live named Erin Adams, who's taken her studio and created like a two-room interpretation. In this studio, she'll have the L.A. River, female surfers, the city skyline, and to be very time-appropriate, even a homeless encampment showing the, the city of Los Angeles. But for many of, of you, you probably have never heard of a book called The Green Book. Has anybody ever heard of The Green Book? I had a feeling Mr. Marquise Harris would have, and Mr. Price. You know, Mr. Sadio, we, you heard talk over the last year or so about making America great again? Let me give you an example of, of, of America. When African-Americans and people that maybe look like Mr. Weezer, Mr. Sadio, and Mr. Rue, when we would travel throughout this country by car, there were gas stations that wouldn't give us gas, restaurants where we couldn't eat, hotels where we couldn't stay, areas in the United States of America where if we were there after dark, we would have to be concerned for our lives and the lives of our family. So there was a guy who was a mailman in New York City named Victor Hugo Green, who developed a book, The Green Book, which became the Bible for black motorists in this country. It would tell you which restaurants and hotels and gas stations and auto repair shops would serve minorities. It would give you routes that would enhance your ability to safely travel this country to make sure that you and your family was safe. And I'm proud to say that one of the locations in The Green Book was our own Clifton's Cafeteria. It was a place that was open to all. This Green Book was published for 30 years. This Green Book was published for thirty years, and it was used by primarily African-Americans as they went around this country. It started out, I guess, in the New York region, grew across most of North America and Canada included. I know that my grandfather and maybe Mr. Price might remember people who actually had a copy of this Green Book. So, that's going to be highlighted at the, the county fair this year. So, yes, it's, it's about having a great time, and I ask everyone to take your families there. I guarantee you're going to have a phenomenal time. But also, it's about history. It's about, in order for us to get where we want to go, we have to remember from whence we came. So, with that said, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to ask all of you to give a big round of applause to our former, real quarterback of this team, Miguel Santana.
It's always good to be back at City Hall, and it's good to be back in this role. We are, in fact, celebrating the fair once again, and here is our commercial, if you all want to see, on the screen.
... celebrates the Mother Road, Main Street of America, U.S. sixty-six, August thirty-first through September twenty-third at Fairplex in Pomona. Check out our six dollar and sixty cent menu at participating food banks throughout the
So, as the council president mentioned, our theme is, in fact, Route sixty-six. We intentionally picked Route sixty-six as our first theme ever in nearly a hundred years because it celebrates where we are here in Southern California. Believe it or not, forty percent of the people who come to the fair live in the city of Los Angeles. They're your constituents. They travel as far as Pacoima, San Pedro, and throughout the city of L.A. to come to our fair. It's been a tradition for nearly a hundred years. And because Route sixty-six goes through Southern California from San Bernardino to Santa Monica, we are focusing on that history. When you come to the fair this year, we've recreated Route sixty-six, from Wrigley Field to the Blue Whale to Cadillac Ranch, where we actually have real Cadillacs sticking out of the ground that have graffiti on them. And we've even, here in Los Angeles, a lot of people don't know, is that Avenida Cesar Chavez and Sunset Boulevard is, in fact, Route sixty-six. So, not surprisingly, you'll see a celebration of Alvera Street and Chinatown, and we even recreated the Hollywood sign, since it goes right through Hollywood and, of course, ends in the city of Santa Monica. So, we hope that everybody comes to the fair this year. This Sunday is our first L.A. County Day, where all residents of L.A. County, all ten million residents, get to come to the fair for six dollars and sixty cents. So, it's a great deal for all of the residents of the city of Los Angeles. And then, we provide it for each one of the council members, tickets for your constituents in, in your respective community, so they could enjoy it as well. We're also, as, as the council president indicated, you can't go to the fair without having food, and so this year, we're having a special six dollar and sixty cent menu, and the councilmen could enjoy the different things that we have. So, every vendor is going to have something for sale for six dollars and sixty cents. So, if you have a large family, like I did with four kids, you got something for everybody to enjoy. And the other thing that we're doing is, because it's a regional asset, we're really celebrating some of the most well-established and, and, and well-known assets here in the city. We're going to have the Natural History Museum represented at the L.A. County Fair, where we're bringing an exhibition that celebrates candy and rocks. We're calling the Rock Candy Factory, because that's something you could buy that many people did on Route sixty-six. La Plaza de Cultura y Artes is going to have a feature around the farm. We're even bringing in the Discovery Cube at Los Angeles. It's going to have a special exhibit around steampunk and working with the Cooperative Economic Empowerment Movement, which is focused on African-American art, history, and culture. And as the council president indicated, we're having a special exhibit that talks about things that people don't know about Route sixty-six, like The Green Book. So, we hope you all come this year. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's part of a tradition in Southern California. And to give you a taste of what the fair food is like, we have actually some samples in the back, so you're all welcome to try some candy, bacon, and other bites to give you a little sense of what the fair is. Thanks so much. It's always good to be back at the city of L.A.
Thank you, Miguel. And they do have, you have a slice of sugar-free fudge. So, that's semi-healthy, I guess. And, and a fun fact.
Any fried Twinkies?
Fun fact, Mr. Weezer, where did Route sixty-six end, Mr. Weezer?
I know it goes to CD forty-six.
No, fun fact, it, it, it would end in your district on Seventh and Broadway was the end of Route sixty-six. So, let's give Miguel another round of applause and promote the fair to all of our constituents.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. President, and Mr. Santana. It's always great to see you and your staff. Let's move on to items forty-seven. There's been a substitute motion, I believe, that's been circulated. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, let's go ahead and vote on, there's two votes on this matter. Just vote on whether to substitute. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
And just for the record, Madam President, we haven't received any cards for this item.
That is correct. There are no speaking cards on item forty-seven. We've already voted on whether to substitute or not. That item is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Mr. Buzkayino, did you have an announcement?
I understand.
Okay, there are no more items on the desk, which is before us. Madam Clerk?
Madam President, council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Mr. Harris-Dawson, I know you have an announcement, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. I want to take a minute to recognize one of our interns that's been on the floor with us for the entire summer of two thousand and eighteen. Oceana Gilliam has been with us here every day behind me, tracking motions, following up, making sure we get the seconds and we provide the seconds. She will be graduating next year in June with a master's degree in public policy from the USC, UCLA Luskin School of Public Affairs. Today is the last day of her office, with us in her office, and so we want to thank her for the work that she's done with us. Thank you so much.
Very, very well. Thank you very much. I hope you enjoyed your time with us. Great. Good answer. Any other announcements? CNN, can we please rise for adjourning motions? I'm going to ask the members of the public, out of respect, can I have you all, please, Are there any adjourning motions to my right? CNN, there's an adjourning motion by Mr. Blumenfield. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's with a heavy heart. A friend of mine passed last night, and she, forty-nine years old. Marquise knows her as well, and she was a good friend, someone who my wife and I and a couple, several other couples would go to vacation with, and so it's difficult. Excuse me. She had a brain tumor. She was diagnosed about a year and a half ago, and she survived for longer than we expected, which was a blessing. Some of you may know her husband, David White, who's the head of SAG-AFTRA, executive director. But she was, she was a good friend, and she was someone who was known in her own right. She was a writer. She worked on Girlfriends and a couple of other shows. But she also was someone who liked to connect people and to lift people up. And so, she would put events together at her house for various friends, and the four couples that I mentioned, we would all go on vacation together. We'd all also work together to help put these events that they would have and host at their home, where we would support candidates. In fact, she did one for Marquise when you were first running, and she did one for me. We did one for a whole number of other folks. As part of her legacy, because she was someone who would reach out to people, who would connect people, who would mentor folks, particularly women of color was her forte and really what she, she cared about, all sorts of folks, but really wanted to lift up women. And we started this thing called Susan Circle about a year and a half ago when she was diagnosed. We raised money, had a couple of events while she was still with us, and, and in her memory as a legacy, give away money to invest in leaders, new leaders, who have shown that their commitment to public service, particularly nonprofit leaders, small grants, and it's done through the Liberty Hill Foundation and through a, something called Susan Circle. So, anyway, her memorial will be on September fifteenth at Forest Lawn, and in lieu of flowers, people have been asked to donate to Susan Circle, which is this nonprofit foundation. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for bringing this very heavy adjourning motion. I, one, I want to sign on and, and co-present this adjourning motion. Susan went through a very, very tough illness that lasted, she lasted way longer than all of the physicians said that she was going to be able to, and that's indicative of her spirit. I especially appreciate and celebrate Susan, because Susan embodied the California dream and the Los Angeles dream. Moved here, got in the movie business, didn't leave her activism behind in, in Chicago. I met her because we were working on an issue, and she was working on an issue, and she called us over to the house and said, you got to meet this person, and this person, and this person, and here's how we're going to get the money, and you go off and do your work. And Susan didn't take any half-stepping. Like, if you were going to step up and do what you were going to do, you, you, you had to do it. Susan was also biracial, so she was an African-American mother, Japanese father, and so Bob knows about the one fundraiser that we did at the house for me when I was running, and then she called me a couple of weeks later and says, you know, well, I'm also Japanese, so we should do an Asian-American fundraiser for you as well in, in my district and in my house. And so, she did that. She leaves an eight-year-old daughter, Sophia, who I think about a lot, and hopefully, our community of friends gets around her. But such a big loss for the city of Los Angeles, and our deepest regrets, condolences, and support to her family.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. I saw Mr. Englander and then Mr. Bonner.
I don't know. Oh, okay, I didn't know if you were adding on to that one.
Mr. Englander?
Thank you. Today, we are adjourning in memory of Elijah Clayton, twenty-two years old. Elijah Clayton grew up in CD twelve in West Hills. He excelled at football, both on the field and on line. His teammates said that they could tell he was, he always had football on his mind. In fact, from five years old, if Elijah wasn't playing on the field, he could be found playing Madden NFL, even during class. Elijah had a great football mind and could mimic other teams, teams, defensive squads, making him destined for the bigger stage. The former Chaminade College Preparatory and Calabasas High School athlete made a career out of playing the Madden NFL video game at high-level tournaments. Elijah had a kind and friendly heart. He was always admired by his competitors and colleagues alike. Known to his fans of the game by the handle True Boy, his creativity and warm passion quickly made an impression on everyone. Those who knew him enjoyed watching him excel in the gaming world, winning tens of thousands of dollars in past tournaments. This year, Elijah was seen as one of the best players in the world. He was playing the Madden NFL Gaming Tournament in Jackson, Florida on Saturday, I'm sorry, on Sunday, where he was tragically killed to senseless gun violence. Elijah was a true leader that took time out of his day to help others. He was dedicated to his academics and to being a great teammate, to his football and gaming family. His heart, warming smile, contagious laughter, shining personality will be missed by all of us every day. Our prayers and condolences are with his family and friends during his difficult time. Elijah was also a classmate of my daughter's Chaminade, and his life was taken recklessly, carelessly, and far too short. This is a tragedy, not just to his family, to our community, to our city, but to our I won't dilute this right now in his moment in this adjourning motion with any messages of what occurred on Sunday. The time right now is to think about his family and anybody who knew him, who came into contact with him, who lost on the field because he was superior in mind and spirit, or who simply had the opportunity to go up against him. He'll be playing on a different field now, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
That was beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we're joined today by Robert Ackerman of Westchester, one of the great community leaders in airport matters, and I'd ask that we adjourn today in memory of his father, Anton, who passed away on Tuesday, August fourteenth, from complications from a brain hemorrhage. Anton was ninety-three years old and was a fifty-two-year resident of Westchester, and he was a fascinating man who led a fascinating life. He was born to Dutch parents on the island of Java, Indonesia, in nineteen twenty-five. And when the Imperial Japanese Army invaded Indonesia in nineteen forty-two, Anton and his family were, were put into a Japanese Army-run concentration camp, along with Dutch, Australian, British, and American citizens. While in the camp, he became, he found faith, and he became a Protestant, and he worked in the camp hospital along with several Catholic brothers. While he was there, his mother died seventeen days before the war ended. He, he came to appreciate his freedom while he was there, and true to his faith, after he was released, he forgave his captors. After his release, he was repatriated to the Netherlands, where he earned a bachelor's degree in engineering, and that's where he met and married his wife. Three days after getting married in January of nineteen fifty-four, they immigrated to Toronto, Canada. In nineteen fifty-eight, they moved with two of Robert's older brothers to San Diego, and they settled in Westchester in nineteen sixty-six. Anton had a career in the aerospace industry. He worked on the Atlas Centaur rocket that launched the Surveyor lunar probe to the moon, and he developed the water system for the first U.S. Space Station, Skylab. He retired from Hughes Space and Communications Group, which is now Boeing Satellite Systems, in nineteen eighty-nine. In retirement, he enjoyed traveling all over the world, being involved in Republican Party politics and fighting successfully LAX expansion. He was faithful in attending Sunday church services almost every week of his life. He and his wife attended University Christian Church on Sentinel Avenue since nineteen ninety-one, and he said that his faith was instilled in him from an early age, when his parents operated a small hotel in Indonesia, and it was a common practice to offer free lodging to the traveling clergy. Every Sunday, every Sunday, Anton would call family and friends around the world, and before long-distance service was cheap, he would spend Sunday afternoons writing aerogram letters. As I said, he traveled the world, and he visited family in the United States, Canada, and the Netherlands. He was also active in the Westchester Playa del Rey community in many ways, the Boy Scouts, the YMCA, Westchester Neighbors Association, for which he served on the Board of Directors, the Neighborhood Council's Airport Relations Committee, and he also wrote a book about his experience in the camp. It has one of the longest titles of any book I've ever seen. The Defining Years of the Dutch East Indies, nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-nine, Survivors' Accounts of Japanese Invasion and Enslavement of Europeans and the Revolution That Created Free Indonesia. That is. That is a mouthful. He leaves behind his wife of sixty-four and a half years, Adriana, his children Andrew, Johannes, Nikki, Pauline, Pete, and Robert, as well as sons and daughters-in-law, and eight grandchildren. He was preceded in death by his parents, Anthoon and Nicolette, his sister Bep, and his brother-in-law, Ari. There will be a memorial service celebrating his life at the end of September, and in lieu of flowers, the family is asking that donations be made to either the University Christian Church Mission Fund or a cause near and dear to his and Robert's heart, the Flight Path Museum in Westchester. An amazing man, led an amazing life, and raised an amazing family. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Any other adjourning motions? CNN, I just wanna note, Mr. City Attorney, the, the screaming and the loud noises coming from outside of our council chambers on the spring steps was Mr. Herman.
Thank you. And in fact, it was loud enough at points I had difficulty hearing Mr. Harris-Dawson talk.
Correct. Thank you very much. Please make that for the record. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.